Good morning, all. We call the School Board of St. Lucie County Special Work Session Meeting to order, and welcome everyone that is with us today. If you would, please stand and take the pledge with me.
I pledge my allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And just as a reminder, we still are wearing our face masks, so please keep them on at all times while you're in the boardroom with us. There's an echo.
We're gonna give us a second. We'll fix it.
All good? Thank you. Nope, still echoing. Oh, that's better. Okay, thanks.
Nope, nope, still there. Come on, Vine, you're still working here now. You haven't retired yet. Got a couple days. Test? Test, test. No echo? Okay.
Okay. Try again. Wonderful. All right, thank you. And for the record, Ms. Richardson is joining us via Teams today. She's not able to be with us in person, but as you saw briefly, she is with us, so we do have all five board members in attendance for this workshop meeting. Ms. Richardson, I would just ask, as we go along, since I can't see you to recognize you, if you have comments, if you would just let me know that, and I can recognize you so there's not a lag in what you're saying and what we're hearing.
We're hearing.
Appreciate that. Okay. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. We've got four presentations today. We're gonna start off, we're very fortunate this morning to have a partnership with the Sheriff's Department. We work very closely with them and the Police Athletic League, PALs, and so I'm gonna ask Lieutenant Jamie Wells to come on up, and he's gonna make a presentation to the board about this partnership. And Lieutenant Wells, if you would introduce your team, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gent. I'd like to introduce our Public Information Marketing Director, Brandon Berry. He's a very important part of this process. Sergeant Wes Harbin's one of our board members, and our Secretary for PAL is Stephanie Herring. So, first of all, thank you guys for giving us a few minutes here to share this vision that we have, and you know, the great thing about it is anything we can do for kids, that's what we're all about. I'm a lieutenant with the School Resource Unit, and Sergeant Harbin is also part of that. So, anything we can do to give kids positive reinforcement and, you know, dealing directly with law enforcement, that's what we want to have, and this is a goal of ours we set forth about a year ago, trying to get the process going, so you're gonna see a lot of work in a few slides. So, our mission, obviously, in a nutshell, is to just let kids look at us in a different light, look at law enforcement and say, hey, you know what, they're good guys, and break down any kind of barriers there might be, and, you know, just leave a positive role model for kids so they can grow in the community, and that's basically what our vision is. The proposal we have today is to build a PAL Center at Dan McCarty. There's a property there by the old tennis courts on 11th Street, between that and the track. So, that's the process we've been working on. Ms. Sullivan's been a big part of that, as far as, you know, open up her arms for the campus to say, hey, this is gonna be a good site and a great location for kids. So, looking at the vision there, the reason we picked Dan McCarty is because there's about seven local public schools. Kids can have access to the facility. There's about 5,000 students between those seven schools. We do already have the transportation somewhat situated. We have three vans that are with PAL, so we want to make sure that we have some after-school opportunities for the kids. And what we did is we put together this process, and we have a Tier One or Plan One is to build a facility, and it's about 12,000 square foot roughly. There's gonna be classrooms, there'll be some wrestling, which is a big part of PAL right now, the boxing, and then obviously a basketball court. So, we want something to give a kid's place to go where they can get involved, you know? To break down those barriers, you get them involved in sports, and then they'll open up with you. We want to work together with a lot of non-for-profits to bring any kind of mental health counseling or anything we can do, anything to benefit a kid. We don't care, it doesn't necessarily have to be sports, but the vision is just to get them in those doors and really, you know, love them and give them some inspiration in life. So, that's what we're about. This is the model that we came up with. It's, you know, the St. Lucie Sheriff's PAL, of course, and with a great partnership, Mr. Gent says. So, that's basically it. I didn't want to take up, I want to have time for you guys, if you have any questions for us about it, to really answer those questions for you today.
Located in a location now? I know at one time it was.
Yes, ma'am. We're in a temporary site right now in the Keymar Shopping Plaza at Virginia and US One there, behind Seacoast Bank. It's the old Rent-A-Center. So, we have a lease there, and right now, we're active there.
Where was the location?
We used to be at the Outlet Mall for the last two years previously. Yes, ma'am.
So, currently, you are not doing these activities at this time, or are you?
We are doing the boxing right now, and then we do have the wrestling that's been going on, but of course, high school wrestling's been going on right now, and the season just ended, so, you know, we've done some great things. Last year, we sent them on a field trip to North Carolina, and I think they went to Iowa as well. So, we're really invested. Every penny that we raise or do anything for PAL goes right back to the kids. That's the biggest part of what our goal is, to put every piece of penny that we get, any donation, right into this goal of getting this building built.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What capacity do you have at this building? We've got the possibility of some 5,000-plus students, but what capacity?
I think the capacity is about 330, if I remember right, just based on the size of the building. It's 12,800 square foot, but it's about 330 at one time.
That's great, okay. And I noticed from the schools, there will be varying times that they arrive during the day.
Yes, ma'am.
So, good.
Well, like, there's five schools within a mile distance, just a short drive to pick them up or what have you, so we're hoping that we're gonna get a big resolve, and this is like, this is like I said, this is the first preliminary stage, and in advance, we want to put about eight different classrooms in there so we can use it for resources for the school to use for different events they want to have, and like I said, non-for-profit partnerships is what we're looking for as well.
And year-round operation?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Fabulous.
Space, you're going to make that available?
Absolutely. That was part of the contract that we sat down with, with the school board, to say that if it's something beneficial to the community, we want to offer that up and be, you know, we got, there's a lot of good partnerships. Children's Home Society, there's a bunch of different ones that we work with hand-in-hand that we'd like to, you know, extend all the branches, to speak.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir. The funding so far, we've raised about 300-plus thousand. The cost is gonna be about 900,000, and we have a long-term lease contract that I'm sure at some point will be presented to you. So, it's gonna be a partnership between us, the Sheriff's Office, and also the school district.
Okay, again, who's gonna own the building, though? Who's gonna give the lease? Who's gonna own it?
Well, the Sheriff's Office PAL will be the contract owner of the building, but there's a long-term lease, 50-year lease is what it was dedicated for. So, I mean, I don't think it's gonna go anywhere, but I think it's, you know, it's gonna be a trio between the Sheriff's Office as far as staffing, and then also agreement between the school district and us. Yes, sir.
So, we are using our property to put this on and partner with them, so there really won't be any financial impact to the school district, per se. I also wanted to recommend, recognize Lisa Sullivan, the principal of Dan McCarty as well, who's, you know, this is a program for the students to come in from, you know, particularly that area, the schools that were mentioned. This is a weekend deal, too, is right?
Yes, sir.
As well as after-school and evening is also, you know, the weekend, so the students have something productive to do, and it's been successful. So, we've got, you know, we've got the land there, and we've got space. We've got plenty of space at Dan McCarty as well to place the building there and then to work, you know, to work with the Sheriff's Department as we've done in the past, and then maybe even, you know, we may even, you know, look around the county for expansion and other municipality as well after this gets started. So, I think this is the beginning of just a great program that'll really benefit our students, our children, and our community.
So, it's, so the school board owns the building?
Yes, yeah, we own the property.
And the lease goes to them, just like in the city of Port St. Lucie.
They're gonna put the building on there.
The PAL building, I think it's a 50-year lease, the same thing, and the city owns the property.
Yes, sir.
And that, I mean, I wish we could have even more, because I tell you, that PAL deal, I've been in it when I was a kid, and all my grandsons went to it in Port St. Lucie, and it's a wonderful program.
Absolutely.
I wish we had a lot more buildings.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for all your help.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jamie, just, I want to thank you for your vision and getting this program. We talked about this about a year and a half ago, and it's finally coming to fruition. It's good to see this. But Jack, it's almost like the Boys and Girls Club on Garden City's property, you know, obviously, the school district owns the property, but they'll build the building, and if anything happens, always reverse back to St. Lucie County.
Right.
But obviously, it's not with the sheriff's support, and these are the partnerships that we want to make, particularly in areas where we want kids to be more active and off the streets. We need these type of programs, and we need these type of partnerships to make our facilities more viable to the students and the community.
As I said, it's just like the city of Port St. Lucie with their, you know.
So, we'll be bringing back a voting item to the board at either the next or the following board meeting. The back-up material will be there to officially sign off on it.
Well, you guys did this before my time, so I just ask you. It's a great thing. Again, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you sharing the renderings with us there, too, for good visuals, and I believe we have some representatives from the builder with us today. Thank you all for being here.
Ms. Harley, can you speak up or take?
Pull it close.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Would you like to recognize your builders?
Yeah, we've been, big thanks to Jack when construction, they've been going through the process with us. They did all the engineering work and subbed it out to the different contractors to come down with a figure for us, and they did a lot of work. We've had a lot of meetings on the side to see if we can, you know, really use our money efficiently to make sure there's no waste, to make sure we get the product that we want, because like we said, we want this thing to be something special, and it is gonna be something special. I was showing Mr. Gent earlier, we have a, if I would real quick, we got a legacy brick here. What we want to do is we want to put it out to the community members. You know, I bought one of these from my parents, who both passed away, as a legacy brick. That's gonna be part of the foyer, and we want to have alumni section. We want to have different sections where people can go, sit there on a nice park bench and look down and talk about their loved one. It's gonna be there for the next 100 years, so this is something, you can go to our PAL website, and it's $100, and 80% of it goes to the PAL for this building project, so. Just showing that off real quick, getting my two-minute spiel.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
All right.
I want to know how many graduations you're gonna be at this year?
Every one of them. So, yeah. We're good. Well, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Gent, Ms. Sullivan, thank you for your continued support. Dan Frank's been a big part of this, and all the board members. We look forward to the partnership and, you know, great things to come, so I want to make sure all are gonna be available for the ribbon cutting. We don't know what the date yet, but it's coming. I'm here to tell you, I got two years to retire, and this is like my last hurrah, so we want to do something good for these kids. So, we thank you guys for your continued support, and God bless you.
One more question.
One more question. Listen, one more question. Dr. Mills?
When can we expect the building to be completed?
Well, if you haven't been building anything as of recent, you know, we're, this is gonna really, once we finalize and everything hopefully goes through with the contract as far as, hey, this is signed off on and everybody approves it with the board, then we can really get our big fundraising push going. We're hoping that we can, you know, absorb some, maybe some of the CARES Act monies or what have you, get some, so we're gonna be doing a big donation push to get. Like I said, we've got a third of the money we've already raised prior to, so we're gonna be on it hot and heavy, so I'm hoping within a year, we can break ground, and then it's just a matter of the process of getting the materials and stuff. I know with the COVID, it's got things pushed back, so I wouldn't really want to put a timeline on it, but as quick as we can, that's the best way to answer that. All right? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next, our next topic is going to be the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Plan, and we'll get that up on the screen there. Helen, Dr. Wild, go ahead to the next slide. What I wanted to do here this morning was make sure that we shared with the board, this can be confusing, but I'm gonna, we're gonna try to simplify this. There's three separate funding sources or pots of money, and you have that in your handout as well. ESER I was about $10.3 million. ESER II will be around $40 million, and then ESER III, we'll know more about that this week. The legislature, I understand, reached an agreement last night on the budget and the process. We haven't really received any of the information yet in the weeds as far as what our share will be of this. On the ESER, the first ESER dollars that are there, you can see that the district was distributed $10.3 million, and you can see what went to the charter schools and to the private schools and indirect costs, so it was really about $8.3. 90% of this has already been spent, pretty much, and it'll go through the, I'm not gonna make the presentation, but you can see where that's going. It's really for the PPE for this year in school, our laptop devices, working with our students with disabilities, devices for them. The NearPod, the ACHIEVE, these are instructional, ACHIEVE 3000 instructional programs, lesson development, and then there'll also be, part of the 90% will be in the summer school, our summer school program, and then we'll be going and touching the other pot. So, what we wanted to do this morning was, excuse me, give you an overview of where we are with this and answer any questions that the board would have. We have, Dr. Wild will be presenting, Bill Tomlinson will be presenting, and Terrence O'Leary will be presenting in the three areas. Within the presentation here in a couple of minutes, we'll talk about, you know, we're limited, the dollars can only be spent for certain projects, and so it's important that we stay within those guidelines, and there may be some minor tweaking of that once we hear from the state legislature this week, to see what they've done as well with it, and then I would anticipate within about, if not by the end of this week, certainly within the next two weeks, we would have a really clear picture from the state legislature on what we can do, you know, what we can do and how much money will be coming to the school district. And then within the presentation, we talk about that it's two, three years out where the money has to be spent. So, Dr. Wild, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gent. Madam Chair, board members, I'm very happy to be here, and I first want to recognize Roderick Nada, who is our Director of Federal Programs in the back, who's been working really hard on these projects, as well as Michelle Thomas in our Finance Department, who we work very closely with on this workload. With that said, Mr. Gent just reviewed CARES I, it's commonly referred to as CARES I, and that is the budget that we initially worked with, and now we're really going into detail on the second one, ESER II, commonly referred to, and our share of those dollars is $33,982,000 and change, and all three of these acts are really about us committing to some long-term projects over the budget period, so you'll see there's some overlap as we go along. Mr. Gent mentioned the allowable expenses, and you can see here, they are very specific to needs that have been created as a result of the pandemic. So, addressing learning loss for us, of course, is one of our biggest priorities, which includes our summer school and after-school activities, educational materials, software, technology, as well as mental health services and student services, and then the sanitizing and PPE and some health plan. We are also permitted to use these dollars for indoor air quality projects as well. With instruction being our core business, we want to first talk to you about what we're using these monies for, first and foremost, for our students, which, as you already are aware, we have greatly expanded our summer school for this summer, and we've done a presentation on that already, and we intend to sustain that for the next couple of years to ensure that our students are all on track as we go through this time period. In summer school, we're doing elementary remediation, secondary credit recovery, transition programs for kindergarten and ninth grade, as well as our extended school year. We are also going to be committing to continuing our K through 12 tutoring and expanding it in the secondary grades as well, and as you already know, we did negotiate with our union partners and settled on a salary incentive package to incentivize our teachers for this expanded school year, summer school year, as well as supporting curriculum materials in the coming next few years. So, related to the resources, we will be, as you know, transitioning to new standards and new textbooks, and so we will be using instructional materials dollars for the core, but we will be receiving all the supplementary resources for our teachers that really add great value to those new materials as part of this. We will also continue our ACHIEVE 3000, which is a reading software for high school remediation. We will be getting the iReady toolboxes for reading and math. That is a resource that our teachers really appreciate in K through eight, and it's been previously purchased at some schools, but we are going to get it for all schools. And then the Ready Books, which are the current standards for next year. Next year is our last year with those standards, so for that blended year, we'll be supplying those books for our teachers. Also, you heard Mr. Gent mention NearPod. I know some of you have been involved in some of our professional development sessions that utilize NearPod. It's a wonderful, engaging, interactive software program that also includes content for our teachers, very popular, and we are extending that on, as well as our Canvas, which is our learning management system that we do all of our distance learning on, but we want to make everyone aware that this is also a tool that our teachers use in brick-and-mortar instruction. It's a place where we keep all of our resources and a place where kids can go to access their lessons if they are quarantined or homesick. In addition, we're gonna do a classroom library refresh. It has been some time since we've been able to provide classroom books across all of our classrooms, so we will be doing that, making sure they're very culturally diverse books. There's wonderful titles and packages out there at this time. Also, on the school sites, the most important thing is making sure that we can provide services to the students in a very targeted way. So, we will be giving one interventionist position to every single school. So, currently, some schools have them out of their Title I dollars, and some schools do not, so we will now make sure that everyone has either a reading or a math interventionist based on their data, their school improvement plan, and their current staffing, and we'll be providing additional interventionists with our, some targeted schools, some high-need Teachers' aids, this is an initiative that we piloted at some of our turnaround schools, St. Lucie Elementary, C.A. Moore, Lawnwood, very, very successfully, either Weatherby before they came out of turnaround. The feedback from both the teachers and the administrators has been extremely positive, and this allows the teacher to get extra support in the classroom, especially during that small group instruction time for remediation or enrichment, and so we're gonna be providing two per school, all schools, for the next two years will get a teacher's aid. In addition, we are very focused on reducing the student-to-counselor ratio, and you know that from previous presentations, and we also were very fortunate to receive the SWEL Grant a number of years ago, and that grant is for social wellness. The SWEL stands for Social Wellness and Emotional Learning Leaders, and it was a grant to recruit our own professionals to go into counseling with a focus on increasing minority representation in our counselor ranks, and this grant allows us to partner with FAU to make a locally specific counseling curriculum program and also to offset the cost of the tuition for our teachers, and that's been going very successfully. Our first cohort of counselors are ready for going into schools this year, and they will be doing their internships. So, we're gonna offset the cost of that to allow them to focus on those internships and really sharpen their skills, which will also provide additional mental health support and counseling for our students. In addition, we want to expand our district-level support to the schools, especially in the area of math and reading. With the new standards at this time of, after COVID, we really want to have enough people supporting our schools, as well as our health and mental health education pieces, and with these additional interventionists and coaches in the school, we want to make sure that we are coordinating and facilitating their training on an ongoing basis in a job-embedded way. So, additional support to the schools. And then you're gonna hear a presentation about our kindergarten roundup, which is our effort to go out and find our kindergarten students and make sure that they enroll in school early so they can take part in our transition program in summer school. You'll hear more about that. We are also going to enhance our VPK curriculum, and it will be a curriculum that aligns into the recommended text for ELA, for English Language Arts. And we are going to use these dollars to offset the cost of our afternoon VPK programs. As you know, we provide a full day, the funding only covers the first part of the day, and this will allow us to provide more Title I dollars to our schools to support their And I will turn it over to Mr. Tomlinson at this time to cover the ESE and Student Services portion.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gent, we want to continue to enhance the work that is happening in the district by providing additional support for students with disabilities, but also looking at ways in which we can enhance the educational program and the well-being for all students within the district. Part of what we are continuing to do in looking at that health and wellness piece is to have the opportunity to expand the nursing services that we provide in schools. Currently, we work in a collaborative agreement with the Department of Health, and the Department of Health oversees the school clinics by delegating to the school health professional that works there, they work under their license. They only have a limited number of nurses that can provide that support, so for the next few years, this gives us an opportunity to really increase the number of nurses, because we do have several children in our schools that are medically fragile, and this would definitely be a great support for them. We would also like to increase the opportunity to have school psychologist interns, because school psychologist is a critical shortage area, and we start every year and end every year with a shortage of these professionals, and if we can get the interns from the universities in and work and have them work alongside of our school psychologists, get the support and the supervision they need, this will enhance our employment pool and, in the end, really benefit the children that are in need of evaluations and moving forward to identify whether or not they may be a child suspected of having a disability, but also having the opportunity to continue the work focusing on mental health support in schools. And then we would look to provide support in our tiered system of Tier One, Two, and Three by having a multi-tiered system of support specialists that would have a focus on counseling and work to support those counselors within the school setting. During the summer school program, this summer school is going to look much different than any of the summer schools that we've had in the past. We're actively recruiting and bringing back children that have learning gaps that need support, but they may also have gaps that are existing where counseling needs to be provided, so we would look at funding additional support by employees that are already working within the system, giving them an opportunity to work through that summer program. And then the ESE school-based specialist, the ESE program specialist at the district, working to have them support our schools in this process as well, and also giving additional days to our school psychologists to continue with the evaluation process to get as many kids evaluated that are already in the referral process before school actually begins. And then specifically increasing the amount of assistive technology, you know, with students with disabilities, it's all about access and giving them an opportunity to equally participate in the general education program, and some of them may need more visual representation through SmartBoard technology, those children with, that may be deaf or hard of hearing that need amplification and personal FM systems, designated apps for communication on their iPads, and more communication devices for those kids that need it, and also looking to replace some of the screen equipment that is currently in schools where we do vision and hearing assessments for children. I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Leary.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Jent. With our monies, that will be utilized in several departments, and the first one is going to be with our Facilities Department. We'll be replacing our, some HVAC systems. We'll be providing a solution called bipolar ionization, which I'll discuss in a minute, and also, from a facilities perspective, also carpet replacement. So, the first one, A bipolar ionization technology. What it does is it releases charged atoms, and those atoms attach and deactivate harmful substances that are within our air. And that has already been proven effective with other types of viruses, SARS, norovirus, and several other influenza strands. So, this is in addition to the work that we're already in place with our filters that we are replacing throughout this school year. This will give us the ability to provide the safe schools for the instructions that our students are looking for. In addition to that, we have three large HVAC system replacements, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. That will start at Mariposa Elementary and then Manatee and Forest Grove Elementary as, Forest Grove Middle School, sorry. In addition, we had some lessons learned from Hurricane Jean and Francis, and that was carpeting and the dampness of the carpet. So, you can see the schools we have outlined, we'll be replacing the carpeting with a VCT, which is a finished flooring material used in primarily commercial and institutional applications. Maintenance on that type of solution is much easier for us to maintain, and when we did have water intrusion or any of those types of accidents, we're able to clean them up really efficiently. What, that will not replace in carpeting, there are some rooms, such as band rooms, chorus rooms, that do require from a sound perspective that we maintain carpeting in those types of classrooms. Our next department that would be working with some of the funding would be our ITS Department. We'll be working on laptops and power adapters, laptop charging carts, and Microsoft licensing for education. We're going to be replacing about 15,000 of our laptops at our middle school to high school level, so seven through 12. A lot of that we replaced from last year was the kindergarten through sixth grade. So, this will be for the seventh through 12th. These are a little beefier type of device because of the CTE and the software requirements for us to replace from that. In addition to that, we'll have about 5,000 of them will be for our teacher laptops, which we'll allow for better of the collaboration, the Microsoft Teams video, those types of work as well. Another project out of that is our laptop charging carts. So, this year, we rolled out a lot of our laptops, and we want to give the opportunity for, to secure them from an inventory perspective, but also having a charging station where the students can go ahead and rack their laptop so they can be powered up during the day. We can make sure if they do run out of power, there's a charging station for those students. The last one was a recommendation, as we talked with principals, which was the Microsoft licensing for a function inside Microsoft Teams that allows teachers and educators to use the collaborative portion of the phone system to be able to call parents, whether their cell phones are local or long distance. The teachers are able to leverage that to continue their contact with the parents from that perspective. So, we went ahead and added that to our fundings on their ITS. The, an example of the laptop carts for you. And then, last one is a group, the custodial group, and some of the schools for the PPE if we required. We didn't get to talk much about, but our custodial group has done an outstanding job this year, making sure our facilities were safe. And it really epitomizes our mission statement, safe and caring schools. This is the group, whether it was during the day, late at evenings, or weekends, that we're making sure that our schools maintain that safe air quality wiping down. So, in our custodial teams, obviously, we'll be replacing for next year gloves, hand sanitizers, lysol disinfectant wipes, our EMIS solutions that we use to spray down the schools, and you can read the rest from that. Those would be the projects under operations that we'll be looking to move quickly on so that when students return after the summer, we continually provide them a safe, caring school.
Dr. Wild?
Are there any questions?
The counselors, with us being supplementing some of their expenses, do you have any idea what that supplement looks like?
Yes, thank you for that. We do pay for two-thirds of their tuition and all of their books.
And this is at FAU?
This is at FAU. It's their counseling program, which just yesterday won an award for being one of the best counseling programs in the country. And we know the quality of the education the counselors get at that program, which is why we chose to partner with FAU when we wrote that grant. We wrote it together, and it's allowing us to, to see a stream of 75 graduates in, over the course of the next few years.
Now, is that just directed to counselors, or is that directed to anyone who may be an employee that want to go into counseling that has a four-year degree already and would like to do that?
That's correct. Anybody who has a four-year degree already that would like to apply, and then we do a joint application period because they have to get into FAU's program, meet all the criteria to get in, and then commit to work to, for us for three years after their graduation date, minimum of three years.
And how long would that take? Is it online?
It's a combination of, well, it went online after COVID. Previously, it was a combination, and it will go back to that. The current cohort is around 30 students. The next one will be 15, and the last one will be 30.
Dr. Wild, I heard a couple of concerns about the program. Is there an internship that takes place, and are we going to be able to pay them for that internship?
Yes, I know there was, people were nervous about how they were going to do that, because I experienced it myself as a counselor. You do have to really commit to give the hours to both a practicum and an internship, and some of you know that as well. And that's what we're planning on doing as, as part of the proposal today, was to pay for them to be able to do an internship. So, we will replace their current position and allow them to focus on that internship time so they can complete the program without that stress and without trying to do two jobs at once. Previously, they could do a one semester internship spread over a year, which makes it doable, but this will do two things. It'll help them complete it with a focused-
Well, I know a lot of teachers were concerned about, you know, losing that paycheck while they were doing the internship and, you know, how does this work out?
Right.
What's the benefit of it? So, no, I appreciate that.
Yes.
The clarification there.
Thank you.
I believe Ms. Richardson has a question as well.
Thank, thank you, I do. One of the things you mentioned was teacher support, Dr. Wild. I'm, could you, I kind of lost what you were saying.
Okay, there were a couple of things with teacher support. Thank you for your question, Mrs. Richardson. One of them was the teacher's aides at every school, because that gives another person in the classroom with them, and we schedule that so that they can come in during small group instruction based on that classroom's needs. So, it could be math time, but it's usually in the area of reading. So, that will be teacher support, as well as providing content support in math and reading. So, that will be adding a math specialist to support the district. Right now, we have two in grades K through 12, so it'll allow us to have a middle school person as well to increase that content level support, as well as in reading. And then, also someone to support the coaches themselves and the interventionist, because I did mention an interventionist for every school, and that is a teacher who works directly with students for remediation and intervention. They'll be specially trained to utilize our programs. We have a, we have an intervention program in reading that requires specialized training. So, that too helps the teachers. And so, we will do ongoing training for both the instructional coaches and the interventionist and the teacher's aides.
Is going to be for the next two years, because that's, we're using the CARES Act money?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
I, I did like that question that Mr. Ingersoll asked about the interns. Now, I, I, it's important that, especially like Mr. Tomlinson said about getting, making sure that the kids are ready mentally, I guess, for going back to school come August. So, the psychologists, do we have enough psychologists on hand that could, that's going to be able to take care of the influx or the need?
Mrs. Richardson, Mr. Tomlinson is coming up to the podium. Just one second.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson, for that question. We never have enough school psychologists. I'll be honest and frank about that. We're constantly working to fill our positions, but we do have about 20 of those positions currently on staff, and they would be continuing to work. This would be that their willingness to work, because they're 11-month employees, so we would offer them additional hours throughout the summer to continue to work. But the support that we're looking to provide for children as they're re-entering back into the summer program would be to offer this also to our certified guidance counselors in schools for them to have the opportunity, because they're always the first responder for mental health in a school. So, giving them that great opportunity to come back in, build relationships with children, and to continue that work that they do so well throughout the school year.
Our certified counselors, they have, do they have their master's degree?
The current-
When you say certified counselors?
It's required.
Mr. Tomlinson, I know we've concentrated on mental health, but what about OT and speech? I mean, a lot of our students missed out on nine months of speech and OT. Are we doing something over the summer with them? And are we, are we, obviously, we always need more of those too, because the private sector swoops them up pretty quickly.
We're in, thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. That is, that's an excellent point, because we're in constant competitive factor with the private sector for these specialized positions, such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists. But we, our students that have those services and they, in order to receive them, it must be part of their individualized education plan. We do have staff onboard to do the summer program for these children, and we talked about the possibility through SR3 or through the recovery plan to actually look at increasing the number of those staff that we have through a contractual basis where we could have more to lessen the load, because those students do need fine and gross motor development, language development is the key to reading. So, if we can increase and improve the options for those kids, the better outcome they will have.
So, we're going to contract it?
Yeah.
Ms. Richardson, another question?
I was just going to pretty much go in the direction that Mr. Ingersoll was going to, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr.?
If I could ask you one quick question. I, I noticed in, in our ESE and Student Services, when you went through everything and the programs were going to increase, I, I didn't see anything, and thank you for clarifying what an interventionist, interventionist does and everything. Still don't understand it completely, but nowhere that I see, and I'm, I'm pretty well familiar with our ESE programs and things, but nowhere did I see anything about a behavior, behavioral tech or behavior tech, which many school systems employ. Do we still have them?
Yes.
And what is their function? I didn't see anything about a behavior tech, which I think would be a very important part of these programs.
It's an excellent point, Mr. Kelly, and we have been increasing the number of behavior techs already that we have in the district. That's been coming to us through other sources that we have, we pay for. Behavior tech specifically for students with disabilities out of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We've also increased the number through the referendum and through the mental health allocation. So, and Title I does that as well for other students.
And what is the function of the behavior tech in comparison to an interventionist or the ESE teacher or?
The behavior tech can offer immediate support in the classroom to the teacher, because they're trained. In many cases, we, we try to get them through all of our training programs through applied behavior analysis so that they understand the function of the behavior, why the child is acting, the way they're acting, or what that behavior is saying to us. They then can go in, increase the opportunity to work to teach replacement behavior to that child so that they are being able to better engage in the learning environment and not have to be removed. If we can keep them in that classroom, teach them different approaches to learning, then they're better off than being removed from that.
I'll, I'll give you a call, and we'll talk about it some more.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Not appropriate. I'm new, so it's not, I don't want to do anything, it's inappropriate here. You guys all know all this stuff.
We do have one more question from Ms. Richardson.
Actually, my question would be about the replacing of the HVAC. How did we come up with these three schools? How did we choose these schools? And do we, are there any other schools that are kind of like borderline that needs to be, I mean, I'm sure you have done your research, but, you know, kind of brought up to standard because we are going full ass back into brick and mortar?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Richardson. Actually, absolutely, this is part of our one five-year, 10-year, and 15-year plan of replacements of systems that we have in schools. So, things like HVAC systems have a cycle in which we replace them. This gives us the ability to really move our plans a little forward and catch up on those types of systems. It's just like painting and roof, we have a plan to replace those or modify them when necessary.
Also, these schools, these three schools, their HVAC systems are 30 years old. They all came on at the same time.
Correct.
Forest Grove and Mariposa and Manatee. And so, when we present to the board our 20-year capital plan, we have it laid out, and, you know, what, what, who's on, you know, who's next, as you mentioned there. And these are the three schools that are really next. So, we'll be able to utilize these dollars from the federal government to speed that process up. But those schools are next in line because they're, I don't want to show my age, but I opened two of them. So, Forest Grove, and then we were housed one year at, at Manatee, and Southport was housed at Mariposa before those schools opened up as well. So, it, they're, they're needed. The repair is needed there, the replacement, not just a repair, but a replacement.
Correct.
Mr. Ingersoll?
This is going to be pretty tricky. You know, what is, you know, what goes to CARES Act, what goes to, to normal school funding? Are we hiring an extra accountant to help this department out?
We're looking at, we've had those conversations with the different departments based upon what the, Michelle sitting over there, if that's going to be a need. We've got a great department. We're on, you know, we have skeleton crews as it is right now, so we'll make sure that we have those conversations, similar to what we did for the COVID relief, we brought on Bridget, brought her, brought her onboard to monitor the students and bill monitors the adults. We'll be taking a look at that in our departments to see, because what we have to make sure is that we can then keep them after three years when that funding goes, goes away. So, like when we talk about contracted services, that's easy. When we look at some of the other ones, they're bringing on aides, there's attrition, there's people that leave and go out. So, we'll, we'll leave, we'll definitely take a look at that, because I have every confidence in what they're doing, and Michelle is, you know, does a remarkable job with her team. So, it'll just be, if it's needed, we'll take care of it.
It's just scary, because, you know, the COVID situation brought on another position, and, you know, this is just like a whole new animal. I mean, you're talking about another $40 million and, you know, plus, plus, plus.
And it's not just, it's also, Michelle, raise your hand, so I want everybody to see, and it's also Rod, where's Rod? Rod and Nada in the back. So, they work together. They work very closely, and some of their staffs as well, and there's nobody better than those two. Rod is the guru, and if he says this is the way it is, you know, I, he's, Rod, I'm not going to jinx you, but he's never been wrong. At least it worked.
I'm not saying they're wrong.
At least it worked.
Everybody else is getting help except for the accounting department.
And so, like I said, we'll take care of anybody that has an additional need, we'll be able to, to take care of them.
The other thing is, is fixed costs covered through this? Because, you know, obviously, we're doing busing, and how are we appropriating money to, I mean, we charge $3 a mile for other agencies. Are we charging like $3 a mile to CARES Act? Or how, how is this situation going to work out? Or we're still trying to figure that out?
The transportation piece that we're covering in CARES is specific to the transportation needed for summer school or after-school tutoring, so we're able to separate that accounting.
And same with electricity and our fixed costs and our buildings, because obviously, we wouldn't open- we wouldn't open up all our buildings, but we'd open up like five or six of them. So are we going to--
We're not charging those fixed costs to the CARES Act and the SOR II. Well, there's some, there's some limitations on what's allowable in that regard.
Okay, okay.
We are providing transportation from our schools to other programs during the summer.
We are, yes.
Free of charge.
You are correct, Dr. Mills. We are.
Where typically would we charge, you know?
Right. So for the summer program, we're not charging. We felt like that, you know, we, and we've got over 4,000 students signed up right now, which is great. Our student, our school principal's been doing a remarkable job with that. And so we know that parents still work after 2:00 or 2:30 they went out. So we are going to transport for free. We're transporting to school. Everything is free. No expense to students or families.
And we have a list of the Children's Services Council agencies that have asked to be part of that, and when the parent registers for summer school, they get that list, and they can choose to ask for that transportation on the spot. It's part of our, we built it into the system.
I know you guys have thought about this, but this was a scare I was thinking about this morning, long-term. This is more like Garrett Torres Terrence's department, Mr. Leary's department in IT is. We rolled out to Westwood, and we rolled out to Port St. Lucie High School computers, and we did a great job collecting a deposit, and obviously, the students, you know, took care of those. And now the whole district has it. You know, we set the bar high now with the CARES Act. How are we going to continue this long-term? Are we going to eventually start charging students, not charging, taking a deposit or taking insurance money, whatever that we called it? Are we going to start doing that within the next few years? What's our long-term goal? Have we planned that out?
Excellent question, Mr. Ingersoll. So yes, we have programs in place. A lot of the laptops we bought with extended warranties, so that we knew coming into this, there would be about a 1% broke fix, is what we call it. Has that increased since we increased the amount of them? Absolutely. So through warranty, those types of things, we do have that available. We also lost chargers and those types of things. We do, part of our agreement with the parent, is that if they do lose it, we do have a charge for that. We have an online system through school pay that parents can go ahead and cover that cost for us. But again, a lot of that thought was up before we designed it, to make sure that warranties were in place. The largest, you know, broke fix might be the screens. You know, that's our largest broke fix at this point. So yes, that is part of our plan. And it's also part of the refresh program, is making sure we're refreshing out all of the devices. That will be a challenge, as we brought many of those devices on, and we're working through that process of what that new refresh program looks like. So we're leveraging the dollars that we have right now and building a program to accommodate that for the future.
What's going to scare me is, once the governors and the powers that be in the state start seeing how we're spending our money, they're going to start looking at budgeting elsewhere. So that is always my concern, when we start receiving these type of capabilities, I should say. So just be aware. So in other words, when you start seeing everyone has a laptop, then you're going to see your textbook adoption money get decreased, because no longer are you buying as many textbooks, because now they'll all be online, assumably.
Except the online resources do cost more than the textbooks, so--
Me and you know that, but--
We will need to work to communicate that with them, for sure. Thank you. Thank you.
The question Mr. Ingersoll asked is a good question, and that's why we're anxious to see what this year's budget looks like. And I know it's, the session ends this week. There'll be a, I know they'll come back for gambling in a couple of weeks, but we're hopeful that, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, that we have enough information to go ahead and start moving forward with that. I think, Rod, correct me if I'm wrong, 90% of the dollars were supposed to go directly to the school districts?
Yeah.
And so we'll see how that, how that works out. We know that the governor threw in, and I think it's coming from CARES, and I could be wrong, you know, $1,000 for principals and for teachers. But there's a ton of other staff as well that are out there, so we really want to, we want to take a close look at that and see, you know, hopefully, there's going to be some flexibility from this year's budget. There's been very little in the past few years. And that, you know, we're very, very careful over the three years to make sure that we don't staff, and then we don't, you know, and then let's say you have all these positions, and you can't afford them anymore. So that's, I know that was one of the things you were alluding to, so we have to be very, very careful on that, which we will be. Like I said, we've got a proven track record with that, and we'll continue to do so. And I just want to, I appreciate the work that staff has done on this. This is, you know, a lot, but it's going to be very, very beneficial. And what I wanted everyone to see, and the community to see, is that, and it's going to students, it's going to the schools, it's going to those that have the greatest needs. I think also included in here, we showed you some of the other schools and some of the additional resources that go into those schools. Was that at the very end, Dr. Wild? Is that in the board members' handouts as well?
Yes, sir.
You know, you'll see that at the end of the presentation.
This.
See, there it is right there. The additional targeted funding that comes from other resources. So we kind of use this as a guide in what we got the best bang for the buck. So that's there for the, you know, you can see 12 different additional positions at C.A. Moore, 15 that were at St. Lucie Elementary, and all of these came from different dollars, whether they were grants or SIG grants or whatever, Lund Wood at seven, White City at four and a half, and Lakewood Park at eight, you know, for the equity of these schools where we have some of our greatest needs, and you see Dan McCarthy and Forest Grove as well. So, and we'll, you know, and if we see, this is a fluid, this will be fluid as well. So if we see a school that has a specific need, you know, or a department that has a specific need, we'll be able to go in and assist as well, once we look at our data and see where that goes. But I want to appreciate staff. I just want to say thank you to the staff members that worked very, very hard on this, to present it to the board, so you had a pretty good general overview of what we're doing with this, and the public has that information as well. Our next presentation is going to be from Dr. Prince, our deputy superintendent, where we're going to look at, quickly, we want to look at your, you know, we've done a major push to get our students that we couldn't find kindergarten roundup, and the steps that we've taken to go out and work with our student assignment office, and Michelle, Michelle Jurgers here as well, coming up to the front. And they've been out beating the bushes. Dr. Prince?
Madam Chair and board members, Superintendent Gent, I also wanted to make sure I had Michelle Jurgers, our director of student assignment. She's been in student assignment for 19 years, and I can tell you, 90% of the issues that the board brings to me, at least, have something to do with student assignment. So we're going to talk a little bit about Operation Kindergarten, just to keep the board updated. I'll go pretty quick. It's just an FYI. You have on your tables there what we call a swag bag. It's a board of goodies, or a bag of goodies, that our students and families have been getting whenever they register their child. So I just wanted to give you an update in kind of why we're trying to do this so early, is right now, we have about 140 different sections in kindergarten across the district with 3,156 students. We have 470 VPK kids. Right now, because of this big push, we've already enrolled 1,426 completed kindergarten applications. And the reason why we've got this big push is we have 200-plus kids that we were expecting last year that never came. And we anticipate probably the parents of these children were concerned, they kept them home during the pandemic, and now we're anticipating those children are going to be coming back to us. And as it goes along with what Dr. Wild is saying, some of our dollars are going to be used to service these overage kindergarteners, to try to get them up to speed and get them back where they're supposed to go. So student assignment, I can't tell you how hard these people work. They have a great personalized approach to what they do. They have after-hour appointments, they do flex time. But right now, they've also been reaching out to our homeless families, trying to get these children enrolled early, so we have a number approximately of how many of these children we have. And also, parents that started applications last year but never completed them, they just stopped because of the pandemic, we're actually reaching out to these families to try to make sure that we capture them early, so that we know how many we have. And we have a lot of these community events, and this is kind of how we function, through the Early Learning Coalition. We had the Kid Mania Drive-Thru, and also the Safety Festival. These are two recent events that actually, we have student assignment go out there on the weekends. You know, we see little kids, oh, are they going into kindergarten? Let's get them over here and get them registered. A lot of our families have barriers with technology, so we really try to get with them and try to support them the best way that we can. Also, we have our partners with our VPKs. Student Assignment is actually going out, and number one, we automatically roll those children into our kindergarten programs, but also, we meet with them, we do onsite registrations with our Head Start, VPK, but also the East Coast Migrant Daycares. We try to make sure that those families get supported in their native language as well. We also have hard-to-reach communities, and I start all the time with homeless families. We work through our social workers. Many of our social workers know where these families are, so we've actually had our social workers going out and trying to assist these families to make sure they know how to register, getting out to them. We've also worked through our local churches and the food bank as well. So our kindergarten roundup, you have some of the flyers that we've had. We did a full-court press over three days, which was last week, at Sam Gaines, St. Lucie West Centennial, and Southport, and we actually served more than 120 families over these three days. I can't commend Michelle and her team enough. These ran from 11:00 to 7:00 to try to support our families, but we're not stopping there. Also, you can see today, they are literally at St. Lucie Elementary School, and I can tell you, one of our biggest marketing campaigns is not just marketing to the public, and you'll see how we did with that, but it's marketing with siblings, because brothers and sisters have little brothers and sisters. And whenever, like at St. Lucie Elementary today, if you have a sibling family member coming and register, you're going to get that support that you need right at that school. But also, the sibling of the child, let's say they're a third-grade child, is going to get a new backpack and a swag bag, just for recommending a sibling, to try to make sure that we're really promoting that. And I want to thank those principals at these schools. You'll notice all four corners of the county are participants. We've got North County at Lakewood Park, we've got South, we've got East, and we've got West. So our communication plan, once again, worked very closely with Ms. Martin and Ms. Jurgers. I want to thank Ms. Martin, because she's done a lot of the groundwork with regards to the print media, social media, our local media, our marquees, our internal TV, TV shop. But once again, our current students are some of our best ambassadors for making sure children get registered early. And you see the print materials here. And the print materials, every one of our children in our public schools got some of the print materials, along with a letter to take home. We've really mobilized through our schools and our school principals to try to get these children in, just telling them how important, so that we have an accurate number of kids, so we know exactly what we're going to need to do to provide that additional support. Facebook Live, I always like to say, there's my glamour shot, along with Mrs. Jurgers. We do Facebook Lives on Fridays, and that goes through Ms. Martin, and we did that a couple of weeks ago, just to promote that and answer questions. We know a lot of our families are on social media, and it provides an opportunity for us to interface directly with them. We also, Ms. Martin had reached out to the TV stations. You'll see the story very quickly that ran.
St. Lucie County's whole district began its push to get new students registered early for the fall semester. This is the district's first day of its kindergarten roundup and new student enrollment. So think of it as a one-stop shop to get what you need to sign up and register. You can go to Samuel Gaines Academy from 11:00 this morning to 7:00, or tomorrow, St. Lucie West Centennial High, and then on Friday, that roundup will be at Southport Middle School. Parents are guardians. You should take your child's birth certificate, their shot records, and two proofs of address. This is primarily for kindergartners, sixth graders, out-of-zone students, also those new to the county.
This year, we really wanted to recapture some of those students who sat out a year because of the pandemic. We did have a number of students who their parents and families decided to stay at home for another year, and so we're excited to welcome those students back into our schools.
New this year, elementary schools will host a kindergarten kickoff to give those newcomers a chance to see where they're going to be going to school, maybe shake off some of those nerves, those jitters. St. Lucie Public Schools, they will return to full in-person learning this August.
And because of the work that we've done, we're way ahead of where we were last year with regards to enrollments and registrations for our kids. Mr. Gent also did a public service announcement. This went through the radio airwaves, but also, it went on our splash page as well, whenever you go to our splash page, our website. And you can see actually that the flyer, we turned that into an informational campaign as well.
Lieutenant Wayne Dent of St. Lucie Public Schools, inviting you to attend one of our kindergarten roundup and student enrollment events. They will take place next week from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, April 21st, at Samuel Gaines Academy, Thursday, April 22nd, at St. Lucie West Centennial High School, and Friday, April 23rd, at Southport Middle School. This is one-stop shop where staff from the student assignment, transportation, and exceptional student education offices can assist you with enrolling your kindergartner or any other student who needs to register. Be sure to bring your child's original birth certificate, shot record, and two proofs of address. Any new kindergartner who registers will receive a free backpack with school supplies, and current students who refer a family member or friend to enroll will receive a free swag bag. For more information, call 429-3600. We hope you'll join us at the kindergarten roundup next week.
I can tell you, as an elementary principal, I very rarely had bad days, but if I was having a bad day, I could just walk down to a kindergarten class. Lastly, we've done a big push with our school marquees. You can see even Wetherby up in the top right. They have an upcoming day where we're going to be registering students at Wetherby, along with some of the sites that I shared. Once again, I want to thank Mrs. Jurgers, Mrs. Martin, and all of our principals that have really promoted this. We're way far ahead of where I thought we would be at this time, but it's going to be critically important for us to get these students in, make sure that they get what they need, and provide the support to get them on track, especially with our overage students. And with that, I'll take any questions, or Mrs. Jurgers will.
Questions, board members? Dr. Mills?
You mentioned, there's a couple of things I noticed, but you mentioned that VPK providers, that we were going to their sites and register the students, and how do we get that done without the parent being at their site to sign off? How does that complete the completion goals?
The daycares have a parent evening, and they invite us on their parent evenings. More specifically, Head Start, they typically have some learning days that the parents have to come in. We come in at any time that they know that they're going to have their parents on site. So we have great relationships with many of the daycare providers, and they will let us know when they're having one of those evenings, and I make sure that I have bilingual staff there to assist every single parent.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Jurgers. Also, what I noticed on the screen was, as the kindergartners are going for their orientation or going to the schools to get signed up, they're getting sanitizer on their hands, and they, you know, before they enter the classroom. And I was just wondering, are we doing that now in our classrooms? I think that's a great idea, that as students enter the class, they get a little squirt on their hands.
I think it depends on--
Is that part of our safety protocols?
I know we have plenty of hand sanitizer that we distribute to our schools. I think it's one of those class-by-class practices. I couldn't say that it's happening in every single one of our kindergarten rooms.
It's a great idea to have that happening, and not just the kindergartners, but really have the kids just take a little squirt. I mean, you can't be too safe, because we're still dealing with COVID.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Chair, real quick, I just wanted to mention at this point, because it's the proper time, I just want to thank you, Mr. Gent, and your staff. Talk about instant gratification. There was a couple of things I brought up. Ian New, I don't know if I didn't meet the right time or not, but this kindergarten roundup thing, what Communications Department has done with you, just fantastic. I love this stuff. They did a great job. It's everywhere, everywhere I look. The other thing was, I asked about, maybe at one of these meetings, we could do something about the zones, the red, blue, and green zones. Well, Mrs. Michelle Jurgers did a thing on our TV station, explained everything completely. I mean, it couldn't be better. And that was instant. I'm just, not even a month after I talked about it. And I want to compliment Michelle, because she does it with a smile. She's got a great demeanor, you know, did a great job. And the other thing was, I asked, three days before we had the other meeting, I asked you about if we could showcase-- you about if we could showcase the young lady from the Boys and Girls Club who won the big award. And you guys did it instantly. I mean, you had a picture of her on the bulletin, on the second page, and it just, she was just, and so was the Boys and Girls Club. They were so grateful for what we did. But you did it so quick. So you guys are great, that staff, and you have done a great job. And I'm very pleased. And so quick and without, so I don't need anything further on what I requested. You guys acted quick, and I appreciate everyone, the staff and everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Our staff is, they're awesome. You get to learn that, bring new, in every department. And that's, you know, that's one of our pillars. That's one of our, that's part of our culture. And so, and then coming in as a new board member and recognizing that and seeing that and complimenting them is, we really appreciate that.
Thanks again.
I do want to thank Ms. Jurger. Obviously, this has been a rough year for everybody, particularly in student assignment, trying to figure out which kids are going to which school, my school, home school. And their staff has done a phenomenal job, making sure that all these kids' needs are met, from transportation to student assignment, and it's been seamless. And it's just because of our leadership. Thank you, Ms. Jurger.
She's fantastic. She's 19 years, and she's got the answer. And she'll have the answer real quick for you. And she's right. She's always right, too, so.
And I left one person out, Lydia Martin. I know it all comes under her, and she, great job. She's so professional. She does her job well.
Yes, she does. Madam Chair, we'll move on to our final item, which will be our Required Instruction and Culture-Responsive Teaching. We made a presentation to the board on September the 22nd, seven months ago. We have two new board members on now. I know that Dave reviewed and looked over that. It did come up to kind of, where are we at now and where are we headed? And so, what we wanted to do was to take the last part of the, we put this on late because we only had a two-week notice to do this. And so, I want to compliment OTL and the department for scrambling. This is their busiest time of the year, as we're getting ready for summer school, the legislative session, and trainings for folks. I also had asked, when we were having these conversations, I always go out and meet with my principals in small groups, and I think it's important. And the principals will hopefully tell you in private that they know that they can say whatever they need to say, because that's the only way we can improve and to move forward, whatever the issue might be. So I formed a small, little focus group of principals to kind of look over what we're doing and to get their input and to where we need it to go. I have them in the room right now, so I just wanted to introduce them. We've got Monterey Buchanan, who's principal at Central right now, was at Forest Grove before that, Michelle Harrington at St. Lucy Elementary, who is a turnaround principal and has done a remarkable job. It's a model school for turnaround at St. Lucy Elementary. If you look at their numbers for summer school, I think they've got over 200 and how many? Over 200 kids that are going to be coming back into summer school. Lexi Lautis, who's second year over at White City, and Lexi was an AP over at Sam Gaines Academy before that, and responsible for the part of that team as the turnaround at the school center. Roberto Bonseñor, Roberto started at White City, was over at Gaines, and is now at Savannah Ridge. And Eldridge Gardner, who's finishing his sixth year at St. Lucy West K-8, and an A-rated school. Marcy Lucky can't be here today. And then Anna Rodriguez, Anna is finishing, is this your fourth or fifth? Fifth year at Alapata Flats. She also served the second semester on the superintendent's cabinet. And so, what I do is I reach out to them, we talk. They don't hold back. They'll tell it like it is. And so, they've been very instrumental in assuring us and looking at what we're doing in not only with this topic, but what, the gains that we've made in this school district over the last six years would not have occurred without the, without strong leadership from the principals and what they've done and what we've entrusted them to do, and in our teachers and all of our staff members. So I appreciate them being here. I know they're ready to bolt, to get back to their school center, because it's a critical time. But I wanted to recognize them. Dr. Wild?
Thank you, Mr. Gent. Happy to have the opportunity to present on this topic. And I, too, want to echo Mr. Gent's comments about our principals. Their input and feedback is really invaluable to us. And before I get into this content, the Office of Teaching and Learning includes the Professional Development and the Curriculum Department. And I want to recognize two of our leaders in those departments. I have Liz Pruitt, who is Coordinator of Curriculum. And next to her, DeeDee Campbell, who is the Coordinator of Talent Development. And they've been very helpful with this work and will continue to be. So as you were pointing out, Mr. Kelly, we are all about continuous improvement and continuing to get better. We never feel like we're done with the work. So this is an update to our September 22nd presentation that we did. We will review just a little bit to get everybody on the same page, and then we'll go into some of the standards changes that are happening, our current content and practices, what we're going to do to help our principals, based on their feedback, monitor this instruction, and also what our next steps are going to be as we move forward. And one of our focus areas going forward is going to be to drastically increase our training in the area of culturally responsive teaching and classroom environments. I know some of you have participated in our Diversity and Equity Training, which was our first step. And as we go forward, we want to make sure to utilize the research that's out there now, the brain research, on how important it is to connect to our students' background knowledge. And that relates to their culture, their life experiences, and their languages, especially in such a diverse school district. This is really just the timeline to remind everybody that we have required course standards in every course, K through 12. And we are getting ready to transition to the new best standards. So you can see in the middle there, the K through 2 teachers next year will have all new standards, all new materials for English Language Arts. And then, the following year, all ELA, English Language Arts, and math teachers will have new standards. So those training opportunities are starting now and will continue over the course of the next couple of years. So just want to remind everybody how important transitioning successfully to the new standards are, because this is where the success of our students academically lies. In addition to those required course standards in every course, there are 26 additional items under the statute that outlines additional required instruction. And so, teachers are required to teach this content using the prescribed books and the methods that we give to them. But with that, the State Department of Education does try to align standards to these required elements. So they're placed in certain courses, unless they are unique situations like Flag Day, which is one day, all grades. So those types of items. Just take a minute and look at the required instructional aspects. These are the 26 items. For those of you that were on the board last year, we did a presentation on the additional ones of mental health, substance abuse, and child trafficking. They were added. But all of these are required by the school systems to embed within their curriculum. And I want to call attention to the five that I have highlighted, because they do interrelate. If you would look at the right-hand side, top right-hand side, the history of African-Americans is outlined a little differently than the others, in that it explicitly outlines what periods of time we are required to cover regarding political conflicts that led to the development of slavery, the passage to America, the enslavement experience, abolition, and the contribution of African-Americans to society. And then, under that, you can see Hispanic contributions is listed separately, and then women. And what you see is the statue and the letter. So if you're referring back to the previous page, those are from that. And the history of the Holocaust is another very important one, also aligned in social studies classes. But I wanted to highlight, this is where teachings our students about prejudice and racism and stereotyping, that is embedded in the Holocaust part of the required instruction, as well as in the character education component. So that is why we, I selected those five for this slide today. So how do we address these required instructional elements? We do outline them in our district scope and sequence. The district scope and sequence is what tells our teachers what they have to teach, when, at what speed, so that everyone stays on track to finish the course by the end of the year. The instructional calendars and all of the tools that we give our teachers are, is the first place where we embed the required instructional components. And then, it's also something we're very conscious of in all of our curriculum selections. And then, also, in our diverse classroom libraries, which I mentioned earlier today, and in our media centers, making sure that our text selections are diverse and students see themselves and role models in their independent reading materials. And then, in addition, with Canvas, our learning management system, we are also able to give lessons to our teachers digitally. This is just an example, and I know on your slide, it looks a little different, and you'll see why. It's because this is a list of different resources that our teachers have readily available. This is in their, in all of our tools, where they go to see what they have available to them to teach. The standards are outlined here. So the first one on this is, it's a unit on Langston Hughes. I believe this is fifth grade. And this is just a sample. Every grade level has this. The teachers can click on these. These are live links for the teachers. And then, what comes up is a larger explanation of the standard and some steps for how to teach it. And then, they click on another area. And then, this particular example is a unit assessment that has questions related to the lesson they just had. I know that was a question that has come up. Do we test the students on the standards that are aligned to this required instructional element? And we do. And this is actually in an English Language Arts class, and I'll elaborate on that in a few more slides. This is a middle school world history lesson and activity. Social Studies is where these standards primarily live. And you can see this particular course, it's the impact of the Nile River on Egyptian life. So this would be in sixth grade, this example. And if a teacher clicks on one of these links, they get this text, which is about African kingdoms. And they then have the lesson that goes along with that. And then, here is another resource for the teachers. A lot of times, it's live video links, so they can make the curriculum come to life for the students. And this is about kings and queens. This is what the scope and sequence instructional calendars look like. And I don't know if you can see that, but you have a hard copy. This is a middle school example. And in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the required instruction is listed there. And this particular one is about the Holocaust. And the next example is a high school social studies calendar. And again, it's in the bottom right-hand corner with what resources are there for that required instructional element. These are all current resources. In addition, we expanded what the current textbooks provide us for the authors in, within the ELA textbooks, the English Language Arts textbooks, so that the teachers could spend time telling the students about the contributions of the individuals who wrote these various passages and stories. And so, we've provided video links, and this is all within Canvas for our teachers. This here is just a sample assignment for you. You'll see that some of the required instructional elements overlap. So if it's an African-American woman, for example, that automatically is going to cover Women's Studies and African-American. So there's a lot of overlap. So this is a passage that the teachers have, that they can utilize, as well as the quiz questions that are already created for them. So I said I would get back to the unit assessment topic. With the unit assessments, those are assessments that are district-created, that are given at the end of every unit of study in our core classes, and they are aligned to the standards. So I mentioned that the social studies standards are where most of this alignment takes place, where the state connects this required instruction to. So it's really heavier in some grade levels than others. So sixth grade social studies, seventh and eighth, they all have some standards related to these topics, as well as it's very heavy in world history and U.S. history. So in those courses, these are examples of unit assessment questions where we do test those standards and this content. And this is a list of those standards in two of the courses I just mentioned. And then, you can see that we would then align a unit assessment question to those standards. But we do go beyond that, because I mentioned in my presentation in September, that another thing that we do to address the required instruction elements is select text passages and stories for our students in English Language Arts, so that they can be exposed more often than just when they're in those social studies courses. So we also, in English Language Arts, do unit assessments. And although it won't be on the content necessarily, it's on their comprehension of what they read. So the questions will be about contributions of African-Americans, Hispanics, the Holocaust period, or any one of those other 26 required instructional elements. And these are some examples of units where the passages themselves on the unit assessments relate to African-American, as an example. Another place we would be remiss if we did not mention, that a lot of the content related to diversity and equity and relationships in the classroom fall into the social-emotional learning curriculum. And so, many of the required instructional elements are in the SEL curriculum, as we call it. And they are spread out in all grade levels. We do have three different curriculums, actually, four, because we had Safe and Smarter Schools and Sanford Harmony, as well as Lions Quest. And then, Freshman Seminar has a curriculum. We also have Suite 360, that also touches on these requirements. We always have to celebrate the positives, and we are still one of nine districts recognized by the Commissioner of Education African-American History Task Force. They have not updated this. I mentioned to you in September, we keep contacting them. They have not. But we continue to update our work, so that when they do, we can stay on that list, because that is important to us. And this is just a supplementary resource that we have on our website for our teachers. And we keep it updated every year. They can use them any time of year. But in the left-hand column, those are live links that our teachers can go to, and lesson plans are there for them. And really, these are just supplementing everything that's already in their toolboxes. We want to continue to get better and implement new strategies. And our principals were a great help when we put this together and gave us feedback on what would help them. Because although those items were in the calendars, we want to call our teachers' attention to them more and really make sure that they see them and they understand their requirement to, there's, these are not optional lessons, these cannot be skipped. So we're moving them, so one of the strategies we're going to do is move them to the top, so they're the first thing they see, and make them hot links, so they will all go straight to the source and to the text that the teachers would need. Or the Canvas lesson. We are also, I mentioned NearPod several times before. It is an amazing software program. It is so interactive. And these are just some of the titles that we just pulled. I was on it yesterday, and there's new titles being added every day. And these are lessons for teachers that are completely laid out. They tell them exactly what to do, what to say. There's videos to engage the students, there's songs. And they are celebrating the contributions of various individuals. And honestly, there's content in this software platform for all of those required instructional elements that we mentioned. Also, to help our principals, because principals are the ones in the classrooms and in the planning sessions, working with our teachers. They are the ones responsible for monitoring instruction. So we are developing tools for them to help them do that. And we went through these tools with this illustrious group, and they told us what would help them and that these would be useful. So this first one is a sample document of, shows all 26 required instructional elements. And it's a, it's a high-level view of everything that is required to be taught in K through 12 and where it sits. So they can find that if they need it. We're going to have that available to them. And we'll be doing some training on this in June. This is another way to look at it by month. So each month, they will see which of the required elements are expected to be taught. So you're aware that our principals do instructional walkthroughs all of the time. And when they do that, they pull up the standards that the teachers are supposed to be teaching. And this will be an extra tool that they can take in to make sure that they don't miss something that is supposed to be taught. But they told us this will be their most valuable tool, right? Correct? Correct? And this will come out a month before the next month, where we will tell them in each grade level what you should see this month in each grade level. And we'll also give this to the teachers as well. So when they are doing their collaborative planning, they will know, these are the texts that we're not going to be picking and choosing, these are important to the curriculum. Although we take feedback from teachers, and we'll continue to expand this, we want to make sure they're aware of what is absolutely required. Again, this is the scope and sequence. I talked about this before, but you'll see where it's circled there. This is an example of what we're going to do for every single unit. We're going to put a symbol in, so that there's no question that the teacher sees that this is a required instructional element. So that is going to really help our teachers and our principals as well. And I just zoomed in at it a little closer here. And you can see that where the little hand is, next to the blue wording, the little hand right now is our placeholder. That's our symbol that will show the teacher, like, this unit, you need to make sure that you teach this. And then the links are blue, because they're live links, and they take the teacher to where they need to go. And I mentioned collaborative planning, and the principals said this is really an important aspect to their ability to monitor instruction. Because this is the cycle that our teachers go through when they plan a unit or plan a lesson. They do look at their learning targets, they plan for the learning, they deliver instruction, but it's not over. They come back together, they analyze the student work. What did the students do? Did they learn what we expected them to learn? Then they plan the reteaching, which would include remediation if needed, or whole-class review. And then they keep going, and they go through this cycle. And you can see the classroom visits at the bottom. This is, this is not a new document. This is our CLP cycle that we train on. We make sure our coaches understand it, because they help lead this work as well. But while this cycle's going on, the principals and the assistant principals and the coaches are involved in this cycle. They're there with the teachers while they plan, they walk and observe the lesson, they see if it came out the way it was intended to. This is a way that our teachers can continue to grow and learn. So it's really job-embedded professional development. But it helps the principals also monitor instruction. And then, as you know, we are required to report that we do all of this instruction, all 26 elements, and where we do it to the state. And Liz Pruitt is the point person on reporting this. And she does have to go into a state database and list every single standard and resource that is used in all 26 items. And she does it twice a year. So what we're adding to this is, the principals will be participating in this as well. And twice a year, they will go through this list and make sure that they're verifying that these things are taught on the school campus. So not only is this about monitoring and accountability, it's about awareness, making sure that this doesn't fall off of anybody's radar, it's not a one-year initiative, it is ongoing. And then culturally responsive teaching. We did start this year with diversity and equity training, but we're going to be moving forward and get really deeper with the teachers on culturally responsive teaching. This is just one author. There's many renowned experts in this field. And this is to build upon what we did this year with Dr. Ella Thompson. And I appreciate some of you were able to attend some of her sessions as well, and we welcome that. And Dr. Thompson has done some work with our principals on examining equity and implicit bias. But she has also now worked with our Student Services Department and done five sessions with our deans, looking at discipline practices. She did help our Talent Development Department in building out this course for our teachers. And we have just under 2,000 teachers that have completed the required elements of this course with very positive feedback. And then we're expanding it into the culturally responsive education realm, both through online at-your-own-pace training and face-to-face training that will take place beginning this summer and into the beginning of next year as well. And like I've mentioned, we are working to continuously improve, making sure that our curriculum is culturally relevant and that our students and teachers are also aware, and make sure that we cover all of this content effectively and for the best for our student body. Are there any questions? I believe that is the last slide.
First, I want to thank the principals who are here today and have helped to give insight to the district. It's been, have come up within the community that the African-American emerging of the core classes have, have not been done. And so the community is pretty, I have to say, maybe even upset. You notice there's quite a few people that are here today. And what they are asking for is stronger accountability. Now, this presentation was great, as always. You do a very good job at the presentation and what is actually happening. And one of the points that you made today was there's always room for improvement. And what we are getting the feedback from the children within the Black community is that all they hear about is slavery, oppression, being mistreated. And so Bill Thomason, I'm sure he understands, as well as the rest of us, the importance, and you mentioned it, mental health and dealing with cultures and norms and individuals being able to see people of their own culture, the contributions that they made to really make this country great. And I think what's been happening, maybe, is that there's been, there's been, we've been top-heavy in one area, because the state does say that you must teach the history, you know, and the slavery and all of that. And we, our kids need to know the entire history. All of our children need to know that. But all of our children also need to know about the extreme wonderful contributions that African-Americans have made to this country and continue to make, and the power that's in that culture and that race. And so I think it's been a little top-heavy in one area, because the kids are coming back and saying, we don't learn nothing about nobody but Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King and the civil rights movement. And it's all negative that they feel they're getting. So as a district in improving, which I see you guys did a lot of work before you got here today, I'm very proud of that work that you have done, especially getting the insight from our principals of how we can improve and move forward and be better with our students, because we want our Black males to be, understand just how powerful they really are. Because we, as a people, we come over here the wrong way, our ancestors. We came over here the wrong way. And all of that, that all of our rights were taken. We understand that. But in the midst of all of that, we were still able to raise up in a very powerful way and make a very powerful difference. Extreme inventors, extreme scientists, extreme mathematicians, extreme whatever, teachers. We need to, our children need to hear more of that. So what my hope is, is that we continue to improve and do this, is that we become top-heavy in that area, just the opposite. Because what that will do, as I mentioned before, it will help our children academically. It will help in the area of behavior problems. I know, because I've done it, and I've made tremendous transformations just in giving the history to our young people. So again, this is, thank you for your work, because I see that you have done a tremendous job to bring it, bring truth to where we're at and where we need to go. And we want some form of the community, some form of stronger accountability. They do not want their children coming home saying, we don't know nothing about, nobody that did nothing positive hardly, all, everybody was terrible and mistreated our people, and they still are like that. And you know, you know what we're going through now as a country. So we've got to do something here in St. Lucie County to do our part and to change some of this stuff around, you know, and deal with it. And that's what you're doing, that's what you're all doing. You're facing the situation and doing what we can to improve. And there's a lot of improvement that can be done. But we definitely, and thank you for the things that you've said in regards to what we're implementing now. You know, I heard that loud and clear. We are implementing some new stuff to bring it closer to the reality of what our children need.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
And thank the people that's out here, because I know why you're out here. And there was a misconception in the community that had went around saying that we were trying, as a district, was taking African-American history and the curriculum out of the district. And that is not so. What we're looking to do is to improve the accountability part of ensuring that our children are getting what they need to get in the education. Our kids, all of our kids, not just the African-American child, we all need it. And the same thing with the Hispanic culture. And our white children, they need to understand the power of the African-American, not the all of the oppression and always being the one down and, you know, and how they, how they were treated. That's important, because as the Jewish people say, never forget. That's important that the people know where we come, all the people know from which we come from as a country, so that we will not go back where we came from. And a lot of bloodshed and all this things that's happening. So, but also, all groups need to know the power within that group, the power within that culture, and that if it wasn't for other groups, we don't need to be top-heavy in the white, or the black, or the Hispanic, with 33% divided between in this district with our children. And each group need to understand each other's culture and the positivity. So there was something that was said, like with the Hispanic community, that the contributions need to be made known of what they have done to make America great. I noticed in the statue, it also, it talked about the history, but it also talked about contributions of African-Americans to America, American society.
Yes.
We need to get top-heavy in that. That's where we're losing it right now. And if we get top-heavy in that, our children will know that they're being taught what they need to be taught.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Oh, my God, I went too long.
Not at all. Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, I wanted to just add to that. I do have a question that I'm going to ask, and this is not, this is from one of our residents. It was texted to me. And the question was, why not teach Black history year-round? It will help lower the crime rate, example, for example, gangs and gang violence, domestic violence, bullying, teen dropout, et cetera. This would help bring back unity in the Black community like it was before integration. So I know you've pretty much answered the year-round, but I just want to emphasize, as this person said, and it's a young man, he went to school here in St. Lucie County, graduated, he's about 28 years old. And so he's not that far removed from being educated here. So anyway, so in his words, he says that this, the change that will come about from teaching this history, you know, is so significant, you know. And I think that I echo what he's saying right here. I agree with him, you know, that this can bring about significant changes to our community. I mean, I'm not going to beat this dead horse here, but for me, where I'm coming from, it's about teaching our children the history that will empower, motivate, and inspire, you know. So, and that's why I think it's so important, especially in certain, to everybody, but, you know, in areas that we can't, we don't have the resource that, again, I'm going to go back, because everything goes back to money, you know, that we need to use something else and just be diligent about it, you know. And going back to the accountability part, you know, yes, we do need accountability, not just on paper, because I can make data say anything I want it to say, reflect anything I want it to reflect. I just need to Google the right area, you know. But I think that accountability, in addition to coming from the teachers and coming from, you know, the principals or whatever, I think that, you know, maybe, you know, we can think about, you know, asking the kids. Because who better know what they are being taught or what they are learning, what they are retaining than our children, you know, and maybe have a little survey, start a little survey, you know, so that we'll get it from the kid's point of view, what it is that they are, they are or are not learning. You know, when I was campaigning, I was told that, you know, they are being taught it, they just don't know, you know. So now, if they are being taught it, then they, they need to know that they are being taught. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson.
Any other questions or comments, board members?
One of the, one of the things you didn't mention, or I didn't hear you mention, and in regards to what we're going to do to improve this, is that currently, we've had, I think, I don't know the number of our high schools that have actually taught, you know, have a second curriculum and elective for Black history. So I wanted to bring that out.
I was just getting ready to say the same thing, that, I thought we had it in there.
I did too, I just wrote it in my.
No, it's not a question, it's a statement, just to let everybody know. Because one of the things that we have done is that as of next school year, it will be at every high school. All six high schools will have the African-American elective history class. And at the same time, see, that's two separate things, because that's all African-American history. And it will be at each of our schools. That's something that has been an improvement from last year. And so I'm really excited about that, as well as everything else that you said, mainly of what we're going to do to move forward and to improve.
Right, that is correct. Dr. Mills, thank you so much for saying it. I did not include that in the presentation. We currently have three. We will have, all the schools will offer that course next year. That course is fantastic, completely aligned also to the U.S. history course, which has an end-of-course exam. So we're, we're really looking forward to a lot of students signing up to take that elective. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Seeing and hearing, no others? Thank you, Dr. Wall.
Go ahead and address this. I see Brother Carl in the back, and I know this was like 12 years ago, we hired a professor, I can't remember his name, but that was from Stetson University. He came and helped bring the bare bones to this curriculum. What was his name?
I can't recall his name, but that is when we were applying.
What was it? Dr. Coggan, yes, yes. And he came in and he brought it, and back then, we used to have overheads. And we placed the overhead on there, as we talked about it. And it is good to see where our curriculum has moved and the accountability that we can be able to watch and see how it is being used in the classroom. And this gives me hope as a school board member, that now principals are able to even monitor it too. Because principals don't really go to all the learning sessions, it's teachers collaborating amongst themselves, and now they're all going to have the opportunity to be able to use this and to do it with fidelity. And that's what gives me great hope. Also, as we said, it's something that keeps on continually growing too. So we're never going to be able to stop, we're just going to have to come back and reevaluate the situation. And I applaud the school district for doing this and doing such a great job. You know, I'm just very pleased to see how it's going. And again, you know, some things, you know, we have to tweak. If the community, you know, I've seen schools have after-school programs where men of tomorrow have started out of something like this, where they've done, pulled students to the side and said, you know, a church would adopt a school, and say, hey, we want to get involved and do something after school and teach, you know, different things. You know, I encourage community members, if that's your passion, your vision, we can, we can help, obviously, not this year with COVID and stuff, but in the future, let's put together a program and develop a partnership.
Well, I want to expand on that too, with the community, because this year with COVID, we weren't able to come in. Bonita Williams is, I believe, still is here. Bonita's there, a longtime teacher, and... Bonita's there, a longtime teacher, and her and.
And volunteer still.
Yes. And some of the folks she works with, with Chris Taylor and Queen Townsend and others, you know, have gone into the schools. It's not where somebody says something and then we never see them again. They're in there. They're over at Central. They're, I know they're at C.A.
More.
I know they're at Forest Grove. And we want more of that. We want more of that, and we need more of that. It's something that just can't be on the shoulders of the school district. And, you know, the presentation today, you know, I'm known for a long time in this community and for what I stand for. Our principals, when I talk to our principals, our principal said, "Yes, this is an area we need to take a further look at." So we built in tools to help them to be, to be as successful as they can be because we wouldn't be where we were right now with the gains that we've made without what they've, what they've accomplished and what our teachers have been able to accomplish and staff members as well. We talked about the book Good to Great, and you've got to confront brutal facts. So that's what we did. We took a look and said, "Where are we and where do we need to be?" And what you saw here, I'll put that up against anybody, anywhere. And then now you say, "Okay, well, let's see it done. Let's see it implemented." And you build on past practices and what's occurred. And we've been able to do that in every challenge that we've been asked to face. We've been able to make improvements there. So I'm very excited about this and glad it's, you know, I'm glad we have members of the community that came in as well so they could hear from us and take out some of the irresponsible comments that were made that were completely false, you know, that we were going to do away with something which, you know, I would leave. I would leave that we were going to do away with something like that because this is so important to our community and for our country as well. And that we, you know, we blend and we balance it with everything else that's out there. There's a guy that comes and speaks about everything's put on schools over the last 100 years, and you name any social movement where it is. And we gladly take it on and take on more and then do the best that we can. But the support from the community is valuable. We want them in our schools. We want them working with our students. And hopefully, you know, next year, we feel like, you know, if everything keeps going in the direction it is, most of these principals had those programs in their schools as well. So I appreciate the comments from the board members, and I appreciate the community being here. This is at the forefront, and, you know, excited about the future.
And Ms. Richardson did have one more question or comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say also, add my thank yous to, you know, to everybody that, you know, participated today. And I too am excited as to where we are going, you know. We were having this conversation, and I really see our community growing and coming together as a whole. So it's really, good times are ahead. So I wanted to say thank you.
Dr. Mills?
Yeah, he's all the way in the back. Everybody knows Charlie Matthews from back in the days and from even now. And just wanted to make that acknowledgement. Thank you for coming to the board meeting. Mr. Gent, there was something you mentioned about having more people from the community going into the schools and being guest speakers. You know, the Speakers Bureau has done that, but it's, maybe we can look at, you know, I know everything costs money, but maybe we could look at, I know we used to have a volunteer employee, and I don't think we have that position filled. If we do have that position filled, I think that they should focus on the community coming in as speakers, to be speakers to the different schools and the different classrooms because we could, this could become a very powerful program in which our children will get all types of people from all over the community into their classrooms to speak into their lives, people that they could, real people, not just book people, but real people in today's time. And so if we had someone that could really focus on that, and I would be more than happy to kind of help mentor or tutor them in that area. I just can't be the one to do it. So I'm asking us to look into that, to have someone that would really focus in that area. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think one of the most enlightening things that you shared, Dr. Wiles, today was that there are 26 different components that we're required to touch on. And I was doing the division in my mind, and, you know, in nine months of school, that's a lot to get in. But to tag on to that, Dr. Mills, we are a rich, rich community with people of varying talents and skills and stories to tell. And I think that could be a good way to integrate all 26 of those components, you know, to make, build our community, make it stronger, and bring awareness at the same time. So thank you for that enlightening point. I know and appreciate you principals more than you can ever imagine. I know the load is heavy to lift, but we are so grateful that you are on our team and helping in that lift, and appreciate all you do every single day to ensure that the students get the education that they need. And I know you've taken more of your time. I'm surprised Mr. Gent has given that much away. So if you all need to make a quick exit, I completely understand.
May 1st is National Principals' Day, and that's a Saturday. So you got Saturday off.
Oh, boy.
Okay, on your day.
Isn't he generous?
No, thank you. I know. And I know, I was going to say, you guys, go ahead and, I know you got to get back.
But again, thank you for being here, and especially thank you for your insights as we go through this process.
I appreciate your comments, Dr. Mills. And one of the most important things in our society today are role models. And I'm blowing smoke at you. I'm not. You are a true role model, Dr. PhD Don Mills. I just want you to know that, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate your comments. Secondly, on page 39, Dr. Wiles, another woman doctor, PhD Wiles, on page 39, exemplary school district status, something I was unaware of. One of nine recognized districts in Florida, Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force. How many, that's nine out of how many districts? 60-something?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven districts, nine out of 67. That's up there with the 98.3. I like to mention those things, you know. And the last thing, if I could, I know you recognize our principals and Mr. Gent's advisory. Before they leave, could they just stand so we could see them on and maybe just give them a little bit more notoriety?
Absolutely.
If you could ask them this.
Harrington, she's pretty new at what you're doing, the turning the school around. But all of the rest of them all had the Speakers Bureau's come into their schools and had many of us come through and encourage the children. And I'm sure you know how much, you could hear pen drop at your schools. You could hear pen drop when we had people speak into the lives of those students and share their life story. And all of you can attest to that, and thank you for your work because you are definitely jewels, and we appreciate you. And Ms. Harrington, I'm calling you.
Okay. Go and have a fabulous rest of your day. I think we have one more comment for Ms. Richardson, and then we will wrap it up. Ms. Richardson?
I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Vaughn. I know that this is probably going to be his last workshop. He is retiring. So I just wanted to say thank you for your service for the school district. Congratulations on your retirement, and you are going to be missed. I've only known you for a brief time, but the word I would use in reference to you, Mr. Vaughn, would be a gentleman. I think you're a gentleman in every sense of the word. So I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you. And also, I'd like to thank our custodian. When we were doing the presentation, you know, we couldn't have survived all of this, you know, being safe and healthy without, you know, everything that you did for our school or have been doing for our schools. So I did, I just wanted to say thank you to our custodial team as well. Thank you so very much.
Okay. We have no other business to come before us today. We have received a lot of information. I encourage you to take your packets and keep reviewing, especially with these funds that are coming down over the next couple of years. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm proud to serve on this team and to see us accomplish it together. Go have a great day.